Would you wait for Brad? There's today. Brad, a moment or two to join us. Give him a minute or two.
We can go through the first couple of things.
Sure. Uh, due six thirty, everybody, welcome to the meeting. I appreciate everyone coming. Uh, I'll go ahead and call everything to order. First item on the agenda this evening is a review on the approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additional thoughts, additions, comments, corrections, if you'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I look for a motion to approve, please.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That takes care of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd remind all visitors that are here that they, if they haven't signed in, that they make sure that they sign the register at the door.
Next up, we have got a conditional use permit for, if I'm pronunciating it correctly, enunciating it correctly, LaJoy Fence.
That's right. And I'm gonna let Ian talk about most of this, but I'm just gonna introduce it. Um, including your package, you've got a staff report and a couple of other items. Um, it's a request for a CUP for a fence to be placed on the property line. Um, and the applicants are Nicholas LaJoy and Ree Blatner. Are you folks here tonight? Alright, awesome. They're there back in the corner and they'll have an opportunity during the hearing process to, to, to talk about it if they'd like to, but, um, with that, I think, if you wanna go ahead, Ian, run through your, your staff report?
Yes. So. So according to our zoning ordinances, a CUP is required to build a fence on or within three feet of that property line. Findings that we have found with that application is that the use is not in conflict with our comp plan. The property owner acknowledges that they are putting a fence in a utility easement and the property owner's expense if this easement needs to be utilized and the fence is dismantled. The proposed use will not impede the normal and orderly development or improvements of the surrounding property. The proposed use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood and will not significantly diminish or impair the values of the property. The use will not disrupt the character of the neighborhood and the structure and site shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent residential properties. And with that, the staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit to allow a fence on the southwest and north sections with four different conditions. And those are that the fence will not encroach upon the front of the house, the fence will not exceed six feet in height, and an access agreement will be notarized and recorded with the property owners to the south and west so that the fence can be placed on the property line. And also that the property owner at 901 Ninth Street Northwest acknowledges that the fence is an utility easement and can be dismantled at owner's expense if the easement is utilized.
The applicants have anything they wanted to share before I open up the public hearing? No?
I don't know if it's gonna get approved or not.
Sure. Uh, with that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and, uh, start with your name and address, please. If not, I will go ahead and close the public, uh, meeting. One question I had, there is an existing fence in place. If I understand the drawings correctly? Okay.
Correct, in portions.
And is the existing fence gonna come down or is the existing fence gonna stay?
Will stay.
Stay? So we'll actually have two fences right next to each other? Gentlemen, your thoughts?
Yeah. Oh, I see.
I'll open up the discussion. I've, I've got no objections
Okay.
to, uh, what has been outlined and I concur with the staff recommendations as to the conditions that to be applied. That's consistent with past, uh, fence agreements that we recently went through, so.
I was of the same opinion. Is that Brad trying to join us?
Yeah.
Okay. I was of the same opinion, very much in line with what we've seen. The process is being, you know, implemented correctly.
You know how much room we have between these two fences? I mean, double fences must make great neighbors, so. If double fence, if a fence makes good neighbors.
Do we have a ballpark distance between the two, sir?
It must be that the neighbor's fence is three feet away from the property line or something.
In my understanding, I'm not aware of that.
Maybe you could speak to that?
Yeah, so the existing fence is putted up right to the easement. Uh, and so what we would be doing is just spanning across that with the owner's permission and then spanning across that easement and then running around down our property line.
So you're leaving that fence in the back by itself? Are you putting another fence along that road or not?
Leaving it by itself.
Okay, so you're just gonna be running the fence up on the one side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're just attaching one to the other.
And you're attaching on the north side or is that the west side?
West and south.
West and south, yeah.
Oh, you're, she's attaching on the south, so what's the south fence?
The neighbor's fence goes on the south and west sides.
Oh, okay.
Partially.
Yeah, so it's like partially blocked on the back corner of a lot, so we're just extending it to the sidewalk so it can come back to our. Okay.
So hopefully that's a little bit more clear then.
Is it saying here they'd have the waiver signed or the?
They don't. The access using agreements, I haven't given it to them. I have them right here, though.
Okay.
Let's see, and if there's any further discussion, I'll move to approve with the conditions outlined by staff, um, with the recommendation of the council that it be approved at the point where the access agreements have been signed.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Do you say it's on the, the access agreement will be the west and the south or just the west?
It's a corner lot, so it would just be the south and west sides.
Isn't here it just says the west?
On?
On, uh, resolution. Bullet three, an access agreement being notarized and recorded with the property owners to the west so the fence can be placed on the property line. Am I missing?
It should be south and west. Yes, thank you for the clarification.
I didn't wanna be approving if it was, 'cause I thought you said both and then I didn't see it, so.
Yeah.
With that adjustment, I would second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation, sir.
Alright, so final approval will be taken to the council on Wednesday night with that recommendation from the planning commission.
Do you need a moment to address getting Brad involved in, uh, our conversation?
Um, Linda's working on that, so a little technical issue she's having, but, no, we can keep moving forward, it's no problem.
Next item is a public hearing for QuickTrip, uh, preliminary and final plats.
Alright, including your package, you have a number of items and this isn't new information to you, of course. Uh, I think, uh, we've seen it twice already at P&amp;Z here. Uh, so you have, I think, three items, four items in there. You've got the final plat and preliminary plat. QuickTrip's asked us to approve, um, of course, preliminary plat is the only plat that's required to go to P&amp;Z, but they've asked us to, uh, to approve that tonight and also to take a look at their final plat, um, not, you know, not a significant change. Um, basically what's gonna happen here is they're taking some lots that were platted in the Casson Heights subdivision, uh, Casson Manor Heights, and they're taking an unplatted parcel and they're gonna combine those into one. So running right along Manorville Avenue, you've got some lots that were platted. We're asking them to plat the entire parcel and so we'll be looking at combining those as part of their final plat. So, as I said, you know, you've got those items in there. Um, the, the one issue that did come up during our conversation was the screening. So at this point, um, staff is recommending that we allow screening via, uh, plant screening, uh, so plant, plantings, trees, flowers, that sort of screening. Uh, at some points in the past, they have asked for fences, so that is certainly something that we could take a look at as well. Um, but they felt that the nature of the subdivision, the area would possibly be changing in the, mm, the, the period of time that we're looking at over the next ten to fifteen years. So the likelihood of, uh, requiring that fence, you know, for example, if it was all zoned commercially, we wouldn't require the fence. You know, if we knew that something to the north was going in that would be commercial, we wouldn't require it. So I think from Brad's perspective, that's why they're looking at utilizing these screenings as opposed to the, uh, as opposed to the fence. For example, um, a parallel example would be Casey's, where, you know, you've got a, a residential property, um, that red house on the corner there that's, it's screened on both sides, both the west and the south. So at this point, we're not looking for that kinda screening, so. And I mean, as I said, you've got the, you've got your reports there. Um, I don't know if there's any questions on it, otherwise. We, we feel like it's a good subdivision and we feel like there's been a lot of work that's gone into it. I know that, uh, Brad can highlight a few more things. Looks like he's here. Can you hear us, Brad?
Yep.
Okay, good. We were just running through the, uh, QuickTrip, uh, plating. So if you wanted to speak to any items, I was just mentioning the screening component that, uh, is a little different than what we've possibly asked for in the past with some of the other gas stations in town.
Yeah, I think we've, we've talked about that and the landscaping requirements, I think, achieve the same principal objective of, um, what the fence requirement is, so we felt that that was kinda duplicate. So our recommendation was just to enhance the landscaping buffer on that north edge. So that, I agree with that. That's, um, something we were recommending of the, um, site plan approval, which again is not. Site plan approval is not something that the council, the planning commission needs to act on, so that's more for your information. The primary action for the planning commission is preliminary plat. And we did receive, uh, originally the, the plat drawing that was provided to us, and I'll share my screen. Plat drawing that was provided to us originally was done in more of a final platform. They did submit to us, uh, preliminary plat documents and that's what, I believe, you can see on your screen here, hopefully.
Yeah, we see it. It's good.
Okay, the, the green area simply represents deep slope areas. The slope's over twenty-five percent, so if you're familiar with the site at all, it was originally graded, uh, with this back area, uh, and the area along Sixteenth Street is pretty, pretty significant slope. The plat is essentially combining a series of lots. And the reason we had to do a preliminary plat approval for this is because we have an existing plat with three lots here that fronts on Manorville Avenue or the Frontage Road essentially. And those have been combined into one PID or one tax parcel, but those are originally part of the Casson Manor first addition, those three lots. And then the other part is an unplatted property. Because it is unplatted and we're dealing with combining all these together, that's what kicked it into the, um, full subdivision preliminary and final plat process. So it's still a fairly simple plat, so we're taking it to council, combining both preliminary and final plat at the same time because they're really just, uh, combining all these lots. The one unique piece that, that they submitted, um, this with an outlot A, and I think that was because in some of the earlier conversations, and we've been talking with QuickTrip for almost a year now, they've been working through some internal design, um, components to the, the original plat had envisioned this being right away for Sixteenth Street and we really only needed, uh, this little bit of right away for some of the, the, um, turn lanes from the roundabout, but then the rest of the right away is themselves. So we don't need this outlot as a right away. Our recommendation is to combine that outlot with Lot One Block One, so we really just have one platted lot. And so that's really the, the action being requested of the planning commission today. Certainly we have, um, all of the exhibits within the plan. This shows the original site, again, vacant off to the west here. This is where a lot of the trucks of the existing use are stored. You can see their driveway has two access points. As you go to the improvement, that access point to the south goes away and the access to the, to the north will remain. Again, it accesses on this frontage road, which will then continue to serve the parcels to the north. And then with that Sixteenth Street improvement, the access will be down to the south, uh, to Sixteenth Street. So this shows kinda the, the circulation. They have been working with MINDOT. MINDOT ultimately is the permitting agency. Um, I'm not sure exactly how that goes because the, they're not changing this year, but because it's a change, intensification in use essentially from a traffic standpoint, MINDOT will have a, a permitting role in some capacity here for this. You talked a little bit about the landscaping plan. There are some additional landscaping enhancements they need to add to meet the landscaping requirements. We've, we've gone through that. That is a site plan review, um, component. There's some additional landscaping standards internal to the site, but those are pretty basic and the applicant is aware of those. Um, beyond that, I don't really have anything else to, to walk through. Um, the conditions in the staff report. Let's see, I was just trying to get the keys up here and I lost some of these. So you can see the resolutions in the staff report. Basically five conditions are all pretty standard. That first one is combining outlot A to make it one lot block. And then the second one is development fee. That's a pretty standard one that we always have. The third one is that they address the engineering comments. They've already addressed most of them. There's a few lingering ones, technical ones that they'll need to, to address relative to utilities. The fourth one, I didn't talk about this, there is an existing drainage utility easement that runs across the center of the site. That drainage utility easement has a vacated, um, electric line, is it, I think, or no, a vacated telecommunications line and then a, uh, an existing electric utility. Those will be relocated as part of their site plan improvements and they've been working with public utilities to, to make that happen. So the council will vacate that easement and establish new easements with the final plat. Last one is, uh, the sewer and water, I don't know if you already talked about this, Tim, but you guys tend to know more than details of this. Sewer and water and, uh, street improvements are being made in that area and there will be some kinda cost recovery for that that, that QuickTrip will be responsible for as benefits, benefiting, uh, entities for those public improvements. So that agreement will be something that's in the final plat approval as well. Those are the conditions and that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to flip through whatever graphics.
Brad, do you have any good pictures of, uh, the frontage road and how it kinda feeds into the residential homes north of, um, QuickTrip?
It don't have good exhibits beyond the site itself, but I can show this. So this is the existing site. This is the northerly property line and this is that northerly, uh, drive, if you remember from the circulation plan. I can kinda flip back and forth between these. Um, circulation plan probably. So you can see that northerly drive. And then when I flipped it Google Maps, tell me if you see Google Maps. Do you see Google Maps?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good. So you can see that the driveway currently, this is all being retained, so that service road up there is still being retained.
So that acts, so that acts, okay, so that access point off of fifty-seven is gonna serve the QuickTrip as well as residential homes to the north?
Correct.
Are we still gonna be plating that as a street going into QuickTrip or is it gonna, or we're gonna have to vacate that street and just leave it a street to the north? 'Cause it's going into the parking lot.
I don't know that it's plaid right now.
So the, the street actually stays here. You don't see it on the plat. So this, uh.
'Cause on the picture with your roundabout, it doesn't show it on QuickTrip's property, but it shows it to the north.
I don't think it's on QuickTrip property. I think it's right here.
No, it went all the way in front of.
It does. The street still goes there, it's just, the street is not a part of their property. So they're doing everything in their property, but the street is still there. It just won't be there.
Yeah, you can see the driveway here to this property to the north. And then it comes, and then the drive, the street, Frontage Road, is essentially right here. It's within MINDOT's right away, I believe.
It is. Now, when we look at that, the street goes, I mean, he's got semis parked on the street.
Yeah, I know, he parks semis. I don't know. I was just saying, if it's classified as a street but yet it's there, then it would be the city's responsibility to maintain.
It's not actually platted as a street. The, the whole frontage area is, is in the MINDOT right away. So it's kinda in a, a quasi-state that it's being utilized as a street, but it really isn't a street. I mean, so.
I mean, it was, it was named. That's why I was thinking it was, if it was named, it was platted that way.
Yeah, if you actually look at the, the plats, though, it doesn't exist.
Okay. I just didn't wanna, all of a sudden, down the road, all of a sudden, we have a street in there that we're maintaining, but.
No, we had some conversations about this in, in prior discussion meetings, but you can see, this is the parcel data. Here's the, oh, I love that little box there. Hang on, hang on.
Just click off of it.
There you go. You can kinda see the property lines here. What that parcel is, maybe that is just gotta be vacated.
We've, I know the city's maintained it in the past. We've hauled gravel in there, that's why I'm.
Brad, if you click on the parcel, one of those, the first parcels, the LC trucking parcels off the GIS.
Well, I'm just saying.
You'll bring up the original plat map.
Bring up what?
Just, just click on one of them, yeah, and go to the, uh, the plat map. So if you go to the links there, it'd be under the plat URL. There you go. So you can see in depth from when this was originally platted, there was a Manorville Drive that was originally intended to be created there, but it was really never created as part of the GIS. So you've got Manorville Avenue and then you've got Manorville Drive, which doesn't really.
Manorville Avenue's here and then the street is here, right?
So.
Highway is here.
Exactly. So I'm not sure exactly how the MINDOT, how it worked with MINDOT because that whole thing would've been on MINDOT's right away, so.
So this is the existing survey. So this is what exists out there today, to, to what I think Tim is saying. And so if you look at the details of this existing survey, this is all part of the DOT's right away. So we have a, a city street in there that serves these properties, but quite honestly, it's DOT right away. One of those old time things that happened and we can't really take it away because then all of a sudden we're taking away access to those properties to the north.
And it is an issue, not so much for QuickTrip, but for future development to the north.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we've talked about in the past, that baggage road kinda behind QuickTrip and I think in the fullness of time, of course, it'll be up to the council, but there'll have to be some sort of decision made eventually once Sixteenth Street West is, is extending, when we would like to get that, because ideally you'd have a baggage road there for them to access. In fact, the property to the north will need it too because it's just too close to the highway to really be usable. Uh, we did talk about the truck, the trucking issues for the, the gentleman who lives north of the, the QuickTrip site, too. You know, he's gonna have to make the right turn, 'cause it's gonna be, you know, they're not gonna let him ta, make that left turn legally. You know, he's probably not supposed to be doing it now legally, but it's gonna be too tight for him to make that, you know, turn. So, you know, there are some, some design criteria which are gonna be difficult to achieve for him in the future, but it doesn't really affect QuickTrip for this plat itself.
So there's retention pond that's gonna be west of the street that we're talking about? Or is that gonna fall into that, a portion of that portion of the?
Like I said, that, if you look at it on the GIS, you can see the lines are kinda funky. So the QuickTrip lot actually extends out to where that street would've been. It's kind of a rectangular, so that's where your, your, your parcel is basically. So.
Yeah.
Where that pond is right there, you can see it, that's actually kinda where that runs on the plat.
Some of their grade gets into the right way.
Yeah, okay.
You can pull up some of the engineers' comments or their kinda technical comments they got a little work to do. Or they can get any fit in the right way.
Just out of curiosity and maybe it's not an issue, but those, uh, fuel tanks being near a retention pond, is that a common practice?
I don't think.
Not unusual?
I don't think it's unusual. I mean, look at, you can look at the south QuickTrip. They have the retention pond just to the west of the current QuickTrip site. So, you know, it's probably not ideal, but it's not unusual with these developments.
And with current construction technologies, it's, it's not, it's not an issue. I just, a lot of plans are kinda hammered, squeezed, made in, in that manner.
And it needs a retention pond because you do have that slough that's kinda running out the backside of it.
Yep.
And that was, uh, we talking, we've spoken with the county, too, about that because they'd like to continue to develop that as their nature park area kinda to the west and so drainage will be something that'll have to be figured out if we're gonna build that baggage road at some point in the future.
So that pond will drain to the south and then go west?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Leave this as direction so the flow will come this way into the storm pond here. Filtered and then eventually outlet this direction.
I think it'll go to the north, huh?
It goes to the north.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be graded so that it should serve the site. 'Cause I know the issue is, if you look on the backside of that design, too, you can see kinda where it's coming off. That's where that slough naturally would've been flowing.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the low spot up here. So they basically are gonna grade it to the pond, gets filtered, and then overflows to a drainage point here and outlets here.
Any other questions? Do we have anybody from QuickTrip here that would like to share some thoughts on the project before we open up the public hearing?
Mr. Chair and commission members, my name's Wade Dumond with QuickTrip. I'm taking the place of Dean. He had two meetings tonight, so I'm, I'm not as versed as him on this, but I can answer most of the questions you guys have asked. Um, if, if you have any more, I can sure try. But we're, we're in agreement with, uh, the, the conditions. We'll be working with staff on those and, um, getting things moving ahead.
Any questions?
No additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, with that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to, to come up to the podium and start with your name and address, please. If not, I will close the public hearing. Your thoughts, gentlemen?
I guess mine was answered. I, I see it written on QuickTrip's plan in here when the engineer that's still listed as West Manorville and their pond is there, but.
Forty-two, huh?
Right there. That's there.
That's the ditch, I bet. 'Cause this isn't, 'cause that, that's his shop right now.
Yeah?
So, if you.
So.
So that, that's the ditch, not the pond.
Right. Well, it looks one and the same.
Well, that is true.
Mm-hmm. And that's probably why it'll be there, but that was the only concern I had and as long as it's good with staff.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine. I just.
If there's nothing else, I'd look for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to?
To approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation, sir.
Alright, thank you very much. And that will go to the city council for their final approval on Wednesday night.
Next up, another public hearing, this time on the Golden Colonel Preliminary and Final Plats.
So this is another project that you're familiar with, um, kind of a development in southwest Casson. And you can see, uh, the staff report as well as the map, kinda of the site. Um, basically what we're looking at tonight is, uh, splitting off, uh, a homestead, which is, uh, been on the property from some time. And the, uh, the owner would like to be able to sell this to a, uh, the, the person who's been renting from them for a, a long period of time and um, so they're looking at basically splitting off the homestead itself, which is a little over an acre and then, uh, adding a little bit of a parcel in. Uh, so it'll have about, almost right at three acres that they'll be looking at. Um, so it's, it's kinda unusual. The rest of the property would sort of be an outlot at that time and, uh, and so what we're asking them to do is, uh, to go through this process. It gives us a better idea and then I know Brad'll go through some of the criteria. We, we would like to make sure that, uh, as part of this, that at the point in time in the future when this develops, that these folks do get hooked into the sewer and water. Um, obviously when they're extended, that would be a requirement we would have for, for them as well as changing their access. Right now, they access off of Highway thirty-four. Um, at a future development time, we would expect to see access into the subdivision and removal of that access on two thirty-four because the county will not allow that access once it's developed. Um, Brad, I don't know if you wanna run it through all the other items?
Yeah, the only, uh, other unique thing I'll just kinda hit on here is I accidentally closed this preliminary plat drawing. Um, let's see if I can get to. There are a few conditions that we have in here and this, this is one of those tricky ones. ones where they annex the property in, and there's no real immediate interest in doing developments, and so they want to continue to use the property as it is. So rather than recommending rezoning, we're recommending that we just keep it as a holding zone until, you know, more full development happens there, which may be, maybe two years, maybe 20 years down the road. We don't know. It's really market driven. So we're not recommending they rezone it, and we're not recommending to re-guide it yet, but just to keep it at that long-term growth until a more substantial development is proposed for the site. So those are two recommendations, just to make sure you're aware of not changing, the Califine Guides were changing the zoning on it today. In the plat side of it, again, this is a situation where because we have to, because they're proposing to split a currently unrecorded parcel, in other words, it's not part of an existing plat, we have to take it through the major subdivision process. It's a very simple plat, as you can see, and you might think, well, why would we have to take this through this process? But that's the way the subdivision code is written, because it's an unflatened parcel we need to take. And because we're creating that Lot 1, Block 1, that parcel is a billable parcel, we're not extending sewer and water services, there are no public improvements yet. And for that reason, they're going to continue to operate on a septic system in a, in a private well. And so there's some conditions in here that make sure that they have adequate septic site in, that they meet current septic rules. And so that's a couple of the conditions that you have on here. We also have a condition in here that, that is important, because it simply states that when development happens out here, they're going to be required to hook up city infrastructure. When it's there and it's, it's convenient to them, from developments that happens elsewhere, they'll, they'll be required to hook up. That provision, this resolution, will be recorded on both the outlot and Lot 1, Block 1. So anybody that buys those properties sees that when, when development comes this way, we're going to be required to hook up to it. That way, we don't have this ongoing septic site well kind of dilemma. It's most likely that when that property develops, it's going to subdivide that house too, because it's three acres. So you bring sewer and water there, most likely they will subdivide, they'll also be able to pay for that infrastructure if they do subdivide. And the planning for Outlot A needs to factor that in, and that's all been communicated in, in prior plan work. So, one of the kind of the unique pieces to that, there is one component to this, I believe Matt Duran is in the audience today, representing the developer. The, one provision, we, we do have traditional development related fees when somebody plats. And one of them is park dedication, so when they're creating available lots, they're going to pay park dedication for that portion that's billable. We typically would defer any park dedication for outlots. And so we're not talking about any dedication for the outlot, but Lot 1, Block 1 creates a billable lot, we would normally collect park dedication for that. In this particular case, if we don't, if we defer that until the full subdivision, just like we would defer any extension of sewer and water, as long as we record that and document that, I don't have any particular issue with that. We just need to make sure it's in a recordable document that we're deferring any park dedication. And it, it would be appropriate to do that if, if planning technician and council should decide to do that. So our current condition, that number two in your staff report, says that they would pay any development related fees, including park dedication for Lot 1, Block 1. We might revise that by the time we get to the council, and you can certainly weigh in on that opinion. Other than that, I don't have any other further comments.
Does anyone from Golden Valley have anything they want to share before we open up the public hearing? Golden Colonel, pardon me.
Good evening. My name is Matt Duran. I'm here representing Golden Colonel Farms. Just basically what Brad had said, we're here tonight to look for a lot split, splitting off that homestead of three acres for the longtime tenant, who wants to take advantage before interest rates climb anymore. So we're working with that homeowner, or the renter. Currently, the other remaining 25.65 acres are Outlot A, as it's shown on the preliminary plat. We are in conversations to try and figure out how to get that developed. We are having some preliminary discussions with adjacent landowners to keep that as terrible for right now. But as it was annexed into the city as future development, we wanted to kind of talk a little bit about that. So as Brad had spoken as well, those parkland dedication fees, if those could be deferred for Outlot A with an overall larger development, that would be beneficial. The Golden Colonel Farms also has roughly eight acres of land that is on the south side of Maston Creek. That, there's some potential opportunity for donation of that, which is adjacent to the Vale property, in lieu of those park dedication fees for, for the larger development as it moves forward.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions?
Not for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has anything they would like to share, if they would be kind enough to come up to the podium, please. If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thoughts?
I have one.
Please.
So you're saying, once we, future development there, we'd ask them to city sewer and water? Can your...
We're going to ask them to, we'll mandate.
Can you put in the same requirements that they have to make sure that the septic and well are dissolved, no longer usable, it's not in here? If you, I just want to make sure they know they can't...
That they're removed?
That they're removed, yeah. And I didn't see it...
I think you could put that into a, you know, similar kind of format with the recording, wouldn't we, Brad?
Then there's no issues down the road if they say, well, you didn't say, and then they still can use it.
Yeah, I gotta quit using my well.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can add something to that effect, probably.
It just makes it easier in the long run, I think. It's just...
Yeah, I think so. I don't know what the, do we have any idea? Matt, do you have any idea what the length, where that septic tank is at in terms of its lifespan?
It was inspected. We did have a qualified inspector come out and take a look at it. It is fully operational and in working order. One of the conditions that Brad has asked for is to show the alternative septic field site on the, on the property, which will be located south of the garage. So that will be added onto the preliminary plat. It's in good working order. Everything's going well on it, so it's not like it's in failing condition. And once that land sale does happen, that certification will need to be provided for Dodge County as well.
My understanding is that according to the, the owner, the property representative of the owner, and he may have talked to you, Matt, about this too, but it's my understanding that it's probably got a 20, 25-year lifespan easily, based on his review of it. So he said it was in pretty good shape.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
We still would mandate that they would connect when those are extended, just because it doesn't make sense to...
Mm-hmm.
I don't think the state will actually allow us to, you know, continue to allow it after a certain time period. So once sewer and water are available, required by state statute to hook them in.
My, my only question to this, if we approve this plat, increasing the parcel to three acres, that'll be the first and only residential parcel in the city that's that size. True. So are we setting a precedent?
My neighbor's got a three-acre parcel.
In the city?
Yeah, there are a couple up on north Mannerville, as well as, if you consider, I mean, to be honest, east of your neighborhood, over uncommon acres, I don't know if any of those are up to three, but they're certainly going to be now.
It was my understanding that they weren't that size.
Yeah. There are a couple larger, I mean Sheldon's is a good example.
Yeah, okay.
That's a bigger one, too. It's definitely not ideal, but...
Yeah, I have a better response to this, Dwayne, than it's not, nothing's perfect when you get these unique, unique requests like this.
Yeah.
Currently, there's no zoning code that would allow development of, no zoning district that really promotes the development of kind of rural lots, not with city sewer and water. And that is why we said keep it in the holding zone, because really this is a temporary move, if you will, until such a point in time, the rest of the development happens around it. And part of our concept planning that we did, you know, showed how if we get hold it in, and part of this review in allowing that three-acre lot, we're making these conditions very clear that when development comes around and it's going to fold into it, that doesn't mean they have to subdivide, but when all of a sudden they look at the cost of hooking up to city sewer and water, removing the well, removing the, the septic, most likely they probably would subdivide. Doesn't mean though that they still don't have this three-acre lot in the middle of the development all of a sudden, but this was just one way to, to enable something to continue to exist in its current form. So it's not creating new three-acre lots necessarily, it's allowing that homestead to continue to exist. I think that's the way we were looking at it, in the interim, if you will.
Yeah, I, I don't have any objection. I'm just concerned about whether we set a precedent or not.
Yeah, I completely understand, you know, where you're coming from there. There are a couple, so as Paul mentioned, Mr. Larson's just north of him, he's got a three-acre lot. It's, it's really some of the unique situations, where, you know, those are both kind of oddly shaped lots, but they're big. This one, you know, I don't, we don't see another good way to do it without, you know, allowing us to continue to develop, you know, and we think from the financial aspect of it, we do think that in the fullness of time, it probably will be subdivided, because it, you know, it, it makes more sense for that to work that way.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, regarding what's near Paul, I mean, we, we annexed that property and that was already developed at the time of annexation. Here, we're creating a three-acre plat.
That's true.
So not apples and oranges, or it is apples and oranges.
It is, it's apples and oranges, it's not apples and apples.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Oh, exactly right. And I don't know, I mean, Matt, do you have any, you know, guidance for us at all? You know, when the conversations you've had with the owner on what they are thinking? You know, I mean, I know he's currently marketing it, you know, in terms of residential potentially, but has there been any thought on, would it be a larger subdivision? Would they be smaller lots? What are you, what are you thinking?
Yeah, um, so Golden Acre, or Golden Colonel owns roughly about 34 acres. Is that a real cricket?
I'm throwing my voice across the room.
Good job. Got tired of the meeting.
Good meeting when there's no responses, right? When you hear crickets. The, so overall, Golden Colonel Farms is roughly about 100 acres, about 99 acres, but they're kind of broken up into three larger parcels. There's the large rectangular, there's four actual parcels that make up that 100 acres. There's kind of the large rectangle that's north of the train tracks and south of County Road 34. There's roughly about 28 acres that are landlocked in between, south of the tracks, Maston Creek, and then Highway 14. And then there's an eight-acre parcel that's south of Maston Creek, adjacent to the Vale property there, or the city property, I should say. So there's been some concepts, we've been looking at different cost analysis in, in how we can market this to different parties. You know, ideally, in some of the adjacent undeveloped land in town, you can get it, it's closer, the development costs are a lot lower. Those 28 acres that are landlocked in the middle there become a little bit of a unique situation. So we've been exploring, looking at putting those in long-term conservation, and also potentially building some kind of stormwater retention, which would serve then the north parcel, north of the tracks. So eventually, if a developer were to come to town and buy those, the 34 some acres, Outlot A, part of that, we would try and find a potential stormwater solution there, so that they could maximize the lots on that usable property adjacent to County Road 34 there, and then somehow tie that into an overall conservation plan into Vale Park, or no, or to the park, Lions Park, I guess I would say. So, still exploring, trying to find the right parties that are involved. There have been some adjacent landowners that are tilling the farm rent, so there are some neighboring farms that are interested in this farm, and so there's some ongoing conversations there.
Consistent.
Right.
Any else? No? We'll look for a motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second with the conditions as stated.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Would be a recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. And that will also go up to council for their review on Wednesday.